Is everyone in on Zoom?
You need to unmute us, Josh, so that she can hear us.
An expert.
I'd like to call this meeting to order for the regular town board meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. Uh, time now is 6:30. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Zizaro.
Here.
Trustee Hartz.
Here.
Trustee Katsos.
Here.
Trustee Moreland.
Here.
Trustee McLaren. And Mayor Ah.
Here. All rise for the pledge.
My pledge is to lead the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the board have any conflicts of interest?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Next up is general public input, if any items not on the, uh, agenda.
Brian Blanchard, 627 Louisiana Drive. Uh, just an update to the board, uh, about Parks and Rec, the committee. Uh, we have finalized the survey, uh, and the results of the survey, and we have about 500 respondents for the ser- from the survey. And, um, we are hosting, the committee is hosting an open house at the Bayfield Library on December 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM to announce to the public, uh, what the results of the survey were. And after that, we will, uh, bring you up to date after the public, um, on the next, uh, trustees' meeting. One thing I would say is that, um, we're gonna need some direction after we meet next time and, and, uh, give you the results of the survey. That's kind of the piece that we took on. We didn't try to take on the cost of things or any of that. That's a, that's a major event. And, um, but we're gonna need direction from the board, whether, one, you want to continue to pursue having an expansion and an improvement of parks and recreation for the town of Bayfield, first of all. And second of all, how you want us as a citizens group to do that. Uh, I think it's important. Uh, I've always believed that, uh, parks and recreation are an important part of life and, uh, for communities as well. The other thing is, I think, next year perhaps, uh, we'd like the board to see, uh, maybe enacting a little more formal committee or commission, if you were, as an advisory, uh, committee. So that we can bring more and better results to you, so that you can make good, informed decisions for the citizens of Bayfield. And what I mean by that is, we will provide a mission statement, um, and we will provide a vision for, uh, how, how to get things done. So I encourage you, you know, over the holidays, talk to friends, family, think about places you've been that you really like, uh, and then think about if you want us to pursue expansion and improvements of our parks. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Any other public input?
Good evening, council. This is, uh, my name is Brad Blake. I'm with the Pine River Commons Project, uh, project manager. Do you need my address? No, not necessarily. Okay. Uh, I am coming before you tonight, uh, to just present a problem that's come up, uh, with our deed restriction. Our deed restrictions were approved by the town of Bayfield back in June. And, uh, we've had week, our monthly meetings with, uh, uh, the, um, town manager, town planning director, just to make sure that we didn't have any surprises as we came down to the end or down to closings. So now we're down to closings. We have, uh, three for, over the next few weeks. And it came up this week that our deed restriction needed to be reviewed, uh, by town council and, uh, then approved. Uh, we feel like that's been done and we feel like it's already been reviewed. It's a standard deed restriction through, uh, Homes Fund, which is very basic, very common. And so I would just ask that, uh, we find a path forward to get the, uh, the, um, signatures on the deed restriction that we need so that we can go to closing. We have three closings over the next couple of weeks, and it's pretty imperative for these families to get to their closings because they, a lot of them have locks on their interest rates and that sort of thing. So, uh, I guess I'm here to, uh, ask for some help in that matter. Uh, I do believe that, uh, that, um, the town manager has the, uh, uh, authority to sign that, uh, document if it hasn't already been signed. I think she is aware of that. I just don't know, uh, I don't know if Katie is, uh, completely aware of the time crunch that we're in. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, I would, uh, invite you all to, uh, come by the project. Uh, uh, the town homes are looking great and filling up, and we're pretty encouraged by, uh, the people that are, are moving in. We have, um, the first two units in building one are, uh, being purchased by police officers. So, uh, we like that already and, um, and a family for the third one. And then we have a long list of people that would really like to get in to those. Uh, so please come by. Uh, we'd love to have you for a visit, uh, just to see how progress is going. Again, we, we had monthly update meetings with, uh, the, with the planning director and town manager just to, uh, give updates. We feel like the, the project has been a partnership with the town of Bayfield, and we really appreciated the, uh, efforts that they put in to meet with us regularly to get updates and to, to know what was going on, uh, at all times. I'm happy to answer any questions, but would ask for your help in, uh, figuring out how we, how we move past the deed restriction.
Brad, uh, when does the, um, locks expire? Do we have any time at all, or?
Uh, one I know that expires for sure is the 27th of this month.
So we have another meeting before that happens?
Yeah.
What's, uh, can we get a response from Katie so we?
Katie, are you there?
We just got received a email from Nicole, and she just stated that we weren't too sure we could issue a CO until, uh, Michael and the board had reviewed, um, the deed restrictions. That's, that's what I have in the information now. I don't know if Michael's there, um.
No, he's not here.
Something that he just reviewed and we could approve administratively. Um, you know, that's, that's up to you. The, the one thing about Cinnamon Heights is that we have not brought those deed restrictions back to the board at this time. I know that, so.
Right.
Um, it's certainly maybe a conversation with Goldman.
I do know that, uh, he's out, I guess, on, uh, some sort of, uh, medical, uh, thing, but.
Is there another attorney there?
Yeah, Lindsay's here.
Hi, Lindsay Nicholson, I'm here for Michael, but I'm not familiar with this issue, but when I get back to the office tomorrow, I can look into it and see what needs to happen.
Great. I, I do have an email chain, uh, where they were approved back in June. And, um, that's why we were surprised to hear that it came back up. And I do know that, uh, Dan Murphy also has a copy of the deed restrictions, if you need it, but I can also forward it to you if you need it. So I'd be happy to help.
Did you send an email to us back in June?
Uh, yes. Have, have you received that yet?
Uh, an email that you got back in June, I, I don't recall, but I got, right? Should I search for it?
Uh, no, I thought you received it yesterday again. I could be wrong about that, but, uh, I can send it to you right now. Thank, I, I will send it to you right now.
Thank you, Brad.
You bet. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, the policemen, they're from Durango.
Uh, one of them, I believe, I believe that they both may be. I, I know one is. I'm not sure about the other one.
And the other residents moving in are from Durango as well?
I don't know where the lady is from, uh, with a family. Uh, she's moving in with two kids. I'm not sure where she's from.
Okay. Nobody from Bayfield?
N- I don't know where most of them come from.
And, um, there's been some numbers going back and forth. The first five are not deed restricted, or they are?
No, they, they're all deed restricted, yes.
Okay, I heard some confusion on the streets, I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so, uh, all the, all the deed, all the units are deed restricted, and the only difference is, uh, the, the AMI, which is required, which right now is 140%, we are getting another, uh, we are requesting another grant for nine units, and those would be 100% AMI. So if you're 140% or lower, you can qualify for any of those. Uh, one of the problems with 100% AMI is if you make over 100% AMI, then you can't, you can't, uh, qualify for one of the unit, one of the homes.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, I think it speaks to the need, um, for affordable housing.
Right.
I don't know that it necessarily matters where they come from. The need is there, and the fact that you are getting people lined up to, to get, um, into these properties speaks to the need, and I think that that's very, very powerful and important to acknowledge.
Great, well, thank you. Uh, we feel that it is. Uh, right now, there's almost 60 people in the queue.
Wow.
Um, that, there's a lot of people, and, and it's hard to get qualified. I mean, uh, um, the one family that's getting in, they, they're well below 100% AMI. So there's definitely a need. Uh, we've had a lot of community help. Uh, Homes Fund has been great to work with. Homes Fund is, uh, uh, very helpful in getting these people, um, uh, help in down payment assistance. Uh, the RHA, we, it, there's just a lot of people that are really trying to help folks, uh, that work in the community, uh, find a home.
Yeah.
So, and that, that's the whole goal of the project.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome.
Any other public input? Moving on, um, next up is approval of the agenda. Does the board have anything they'd like to add or move around or remove?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the November 19th regular meeting minutes presented by.
It's the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, the agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Um, next up is approval of the minutes from November 19th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 19th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next, the town manager report.
Katie?
Sorry. You know, I can't find the button to see if I can, if I know. Um, okay, so, um, the, in the management report, basically gave you an update, uh, that we did receive the $1 million to the park loan local affairs, uh, regarding the, um, the energy, uh, performance contracting grant. Uh, we did not receive the public building, uh, grant, and I believe that McKinstry is gonna come back, they'd like to come back in February, uh, to have that discussion with the board, basically your other options as far as, um, electrification in the area. Um, I did provide a list of all the grants, just so you have that there, um, in front of you, uh, from before, and so I just thought I would just put it in the public, uh, actual public, um, documents so that it's there, uh, for if you ever need to take a look at or any other reasons. Um, I did have a letter to Upper Pine regarding, uh, impact fees, um, and I'm still waiting for CDOT, uh, to execute, um, the, or, or send this document to execute the documents agreement for the heat intersection, the 1.57. And Bridget delayed that because, um, she's gonna add additional, uh, signal funding to that, and also there's another funding that comes from the town, part of the $500,000 school district, uh, provided as well. So as soon as I get that document for Upper Pine, uh, I'm sorry, everything takes a long time, uh, to get, um, from CDOT, all I can do is maybe send them the letter that we had, that we were awarded that, um, that actually came from Michael Bennett and, uh, Jacob Lippers, uh, office, so. Well, do you have any questions?
So Katie, I got an email at 5:30 and I haven't read it yet, but it, I haven't looked at the document yet from CDOT. It's from, uh, Lilia Gersham? Is that familiar?
I, I noticed something. I haven't had a chance to open it.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I didn't know if you looked at it or not. I was just asking.
Okay, I'll, I'll certainly, it'll be on my agenda first tomorrow.
Mine too. Okay. Any questions, concerns?
Katie, may I ask a question? Or, I don't know, I'm, okay. Um, my question is regarding, um, the utility fees. Was that gonna be in someone else's update tonight? Cause I'm just wondering where we're at on, I've been getting asked by neighbors, uh, when they're gonna be billed, and I thought at the last meeting, we talked about, we were close.
I did talk to Kathy, um, and Kristen is hoping for a billing, um, this, this week. Uh, and so we'll get that information on Facebook that, oh, your bill is coming, so. But I think we, I think Kristen, um, the staff has done a good job, uh, leading up some of the issues, um, for billable.
Thank you, and I have one more question, cause I didn't see it as a, a report item tonight. I was just wondering how the transition has been going, um, to the payroll department for, um, staff pay? And?
Uh, probably leave that up to Marie.
Okay.
If she's there. Uh, I, I know that there are a lot of issues, um, for payroll.
Okay, the actual payroll part, um, hopefully we got that all across our fingers, taken care of, um, for this next payroll on Friday. Um, we had a lot of, um, hourly wages that weren't updated, um, so I had to go in and updated those and pretty much get, do another payroll on Monday or Tuesday, um, to make sure they receive that, cause I wasn't gonna wait till this payroll. And we had federal withholding, um, issues that maybe they were married and on their file, on their paycheck, it said, "Single." So we had to go back and, um, fix that as well. And then some people, the correct medical amount for insurance was not taken out, so some were overcharged and some were undercharged. So the plan is to fix it all, um, this payroll, all the salary part, we made sure all of that was taken care of, um, last week before the holidays. Um, the next two weeks or two payrolls, um, we do not have any medical insurance benefits coming out, so we can turn that part off as well. So the actual payroll part, yes, it was a transition. Um, we knew there was gonna be kinks, um, but we think hopefully we got it all worked out, cross our fingers, for this Friday.
So when something like that happens, what have you set into play that will help to mitigate that from happening in the future?
Well, it was more of a timing thing. Um, we're trying to get it going so that we didn't have to do W2s for this year. We wanted payroll department to run those, so we needed to get all this, um, information, files to them. And we also had a transition in the person who was helping us, and so that was part, I think, part of the issue too, is that our main contact, um, wasn't there, and we had to transition to somebody else and all of that. So next time, we would probably be a little more mindful of the timing and prepare a little more, uh, better for the transition.
So are you saying that someone from the payroll department that was supposed to be your support staff wasn't available?
They, they were leaving, yes. So we had a transition between that person and a new person.
Okay. And then how is the, um, payroll department's, um, processes interfacing with CASL? How's that working out?
That's where we're working on that, yes. I still have to do the GL report.
Have you identified what the issue is?
Well, we, I need to get with, um, I've got the information from CASL of what we need from the payroll department. Now I just need to get that information and give it to the payroll department so they can create a file that is going to be uploaded into CASL for our, um, accounting.
Okay.
So still a lot, but we're in process.
I, I would like to, um, maybe just recommend some processes that you might wanna put into play to just check some measures for the future, to have procedures, um, written about this to help you guys. So in the future, if something like that happens and you're not available, whoever's helping you out doesn't get in a hole and have that, something like that happen again.
Any other questions or concerns?
No, thank you.
Um, next would be the town clerk cultural, or, or, or director report.
All right, so just some quick highlights. Um, this Saturday is the last week in the fifth and sixth grade basketball. Seems like we did have a holiday break in there, but man, that seems like that season went really fast. So that shifts right into K through four basketball. Um, registration ends on 12/16/24, so get the word out. Seems like registration's a little slow, but we have been opening it up longer. Um, we, historically, it only had it open for two or three weeks. We've been opening up about a month in advance now to try to get that out. We did, uh, DJ did send some flyers over to the school district to help get the registration up for that. Um, and we're looking forward to seeing those brand new basketball hoops that the board approved last year, and this will be the first season where we get to use them, so they're really nice. Um, so I'm excited about that. Uh, DJ and I have been going back and forth on adult indoor soccer. Um, last year, we had some real close calls with some safety concerns in that gym. That gym is just not made for adults kicking the ball as hard as they can. We're getting broken windows, we're getting kids, I call them kids, they're teenagers, but they, you know, getting tossed into, close into the bleachers and things like that. So I'm really feeling in my gut that we should convert that into an adult spring soccer league and play it outdoors. Um, it will require to buy some outdoor sized goals, is about really the only cost we have to put into it, and we have the field out there. I think we will run into some weather delays possibly, cause we know how it is here in the spring. Um, but I just feel it's safer and it's gonna be more fun for everyone involved. That gym, it's just when they kick that ball, I don't know if you guys have ever seen indoor soccer, but it's pretty intense, and the bleachers are literally right on the sidelines. So that's kind of the, the direction we're leaning on that. We have reached out to some people, um, that were really involved in that program. Um, we haven't in, really got any feedback yet, so I'm thinking it's a move that we're gonna likely make, and that's gonna also free up more availability for coaches, for their practices, and for, um, adult volleyball later down the road, so.
Dustin, how many people participate in indoor adult soccer?
I would say usually we have about eight teams, six to eight teams.
Wow, okay.
Is what I've seen historically.
Okay.
And I know that it's sad, cause they, people need things to do when the weather's bad, but that facility's just not, man, we, since I've been in charge of Rec, we've had two broken windows just from the adult soccer. And we've had three, actually, but one was Wolverine Academy. So that's kind of the way I'm leaning. I mean, it'll, I hate to boot them outside, but then again, you know, it'd be fun to have an adult soccer league. I might even play myself, so.
Do we know, are there option, like, does, are there comparisons that are indoor soccer to see how other people and what size of, uh, area they're running this in? Because right when you said safety concern, I'm all for make it spring, because.
Right.
It just, it doesn't, if, if you're, if in your gut, you're not feeling it?
So have you ever been up to the college student union building up at Fort Lewis? That's where they hold the Yaffle, or not Yaffle, sorry, the, uh, DYSA holds their indoor soccer. My son plays in that league. And the key is, is they have, on the sides, they have all these padded walls.
Okay, yeah.
So there's no windows, cause the windows are way up high on the walk-around track. And they can, it's a huge building, so they can run three or four, and they have the divided, padded dividers divide all the courts, so. And even then, as a spectator, you better have your head on a swivel, or you're gonna get hit with a ball.
Yeah.
So size-wise, I mean, I hate to get rid of a league, I really do, cause I know there's gonna be some negative feedback to that, so I'm all open for ideas. Like I said, we're just in the planning stage of that right now. Um, but my heart of hearts is kind of leaning toward putting it outside, just for safety, for gym purposes and things of that nature.
Yeah, I think you wanna avoid liability issues.
Yeah, and it, the school district partners with us on that too, but we need to be responsible on our end of it, not just have a free-for-all going on in there. Um, and it will open up more, and Brian will like this, it will open up more availability for pickleball too, was the other added benefit. We're looking to expand that. And people love, like it, but we've reached out to three people that are really adamant about that program. We haven't gotten any negative feedback yet.
Okay.
And it's just something we're kind of trying to figure out what's best. So that one's, we're kind of really weighing it, and it's a hard decision. But, yeah, I thought I'd bring it up in case you guys had any suggestions for me on that. So, and on the clerk end of it, I think I found some success locating some missing meeting minutes from the early 1900s.
Oh, that helps. It's very helpful.
Been working on that, digging around. Josh actually helped me, and we dug out all sorts of old stuff out of that library, and I think I've got at least another starting point to maybe get all that going. And I'd like to get a machine. Um, they cost about $1,200 to, uh, basically digitize and turn it into microfilm. So that's kind of the direction I'm going with that. Um, there is money in the budget, possibly for that machine, and I may be able to just borrow one too, but.
Yeah, I was thinking rental?
Yeah, pretty cool stuff, and hoping it's got all of it that we need. I did find some 1970s stuff that's already on microfilm. So, but we don't really have it. We have a MicroFish reader, but the light bulb's kind of broke, and it's, it's just not good.
No replacement parts that we found?
Makes, takes me back to high school running a microfilm. We didn't have the internet back then, dating myself. All right, and just staffing continues to be a work in progress. Um, Colorado labor laws are pretty clear about what and what you can have the under 18-year-old kids doing, and they can't do a lot of adult sports stuff. So it's real hard to find, and it, somebody over the age of 18 that really wants to work five hours a week. So that's something we're kind of struggling with, and we're working on it. I know Marie and DJ teamed up for a job fair, and we did get one. Right, we got two actually, but he didn't last very long, so we did get one out of that. So that's kind of where we're at on that. They can be under 18 and be helpers and/or, you know, kind of scorekeepers, things like that, but they can't be actively refereeing adult games. They have to be 18 or older for that. So in the summer, it's pretty easy for softball, cause they're, you know, the older kids are out of school and stuff, and we have some go-tos there, but that's what we're working on.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Parks and Trails is not here.
Mark Spins out, out sick the last two days.
Okay.
Moving on to the financial action agenda, November twenty twenty-four dispersments.
I don't have anything to add to the dispersments unless you have any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the dispersments as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro?
Yes.
Trustee Hartz?
Yes.
Trustee Katzos?
Yes.
Trustee Moreland?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Um, KRW Associates LLC Town Trustee Team Building Retreat for thirty-five hundred.
Mr. Mayor, I think this would be a good opportunity for the board, so I'm, I'm willing to move forward with it. I think that thirty-five hundred dollars is reasonable.
I personally have concerns. Um, I've done a little research and this board has spent almost thirteen thousand dollars on the termination of the town manager. Um, and that meter is still ticking. Um, we're not responsibly spending the taxpayers' money. I like the spirit of the idea of it, but we've had several runs at this type of thing. And the board, members of the board failed to show, respond to emails, even open emails. Um, that's another thirty-five hundred dollars and that's not even counting the twenty-six thousand dollars for KRW to find us a town manager. And that's not accounting for the temporary housing that we have to pay an interim town manager. Um, so we're, we're upwards towards about sixty thousand dollars in money that was not in the budget for what has occurred. And so I, I, um, I want to, I want to spend the taxpayers' money responsibly. And if board members are not going to participate, um, or open their emails or attend these meetings or meeting, um, I, I just don't know that it's money well spent and I have grave concern about that.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the team building retreat.
I'll second the motion.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just had one thing that, um, I, I can see your point, um, Trustee Katzos. Um, if we do this, we, we need to be dedicated to it. Like that's, that's town monies that are being spent and so each and every one of us has to be super dedicated, I mean, myself included, um, to make sure that it happens and we do what we need to do on it.
I concur and I think if when we get a date set, that everybody that says that they're gonna make that meeting needs to make that meeting?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. In person?
In person?
Yes. No, on, none of that.
Right, none of that.
It doesn't work when you do it on Zoom.
No, we all need to be there. We all need to make sure we're there in person and if you're gonna make the commitment, make the commitment.
I do have a question also of whether or not it, we have the funds in the budget to do it. Um, that usually is a question I ask. You knew I was gonna ask that, right?
I think at this time that question's appropriate for town manager Sicles.
Okay.
As to where she would allocate that, those funds.
Katie, if you can assist with whether or not there's funds in the budget?
I would assume that we will, if Katie's not available, I would assume that we would allocate that money out of, since it would be training for the town board, you guys do have a line item in the general fund for training.
And there's still funds left from that?
And there are funds left in, in that line item, so that's where we would allocate those, those dollars.
I think that's unacceptable.
Nice on the fly.
Yeah, good job.
Good job, Daisy.
I know some things.
We know you do.
Can I also, I, I recommend too that we try to plan this sooner rather than later since we're gonna be talking, unless, I, I'm just kind of curious. So I'm assuming if we move forward with this, we'll be looking at dates. I would just really like to get this done and.
It's a calendar date.
Oh, it's already in?
No.
Oh, no, there's a.
That you put your dates in.
Oh, for this? Oh, okay.
I can reset the email tomorrow morning.
It's probably a good idea. I like that idea. Only because it'll be easier for me to find it. I knew it was there, but I wanted to make sure we agreed on it before I did it.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro?
Yes.
Trustee Hartz?
Yes.
Trustee Katzos?
No.
Trustee Moreland?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Moving on to the action agenda, resolution six forty-two highway user tax twenty twenty-four report.
Yeah, so typically, um, this is adopted by the board in January, uh, but, uh, there's been a lot of street improvement in twenty twenty-four and because we were done with an extreme improvement, just thought I'd get it on the agenda for now and then get this signed. It needs to see dot, um, this year.
Does the board have any questions?
I think it's appropriate and I think, I think it definitely shows that we're being transparent with the improvements as intended.
Is there any public comment? Guess we're looking for an emotion, a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution six forty-two.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Um, roll call please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro?
Yes.
Trustee Hartz?
Yes.
Trustee Katzos?
Yes.
Trustee Moreland?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. So we have a blank under four B and I see nothing anywhere that says what four B would be for. Am I correct in assuming there is no four B? Just checking. Board of trustee reports, um, I don't have anything at this time. Uh, Trustee Hartz?
Um, I'm still, Tom and I, or excuse me, Mayor Ah, and, uh, I are both challenged with the La Plata Economic Alliance Board position. I cannot assume it because I have a every other week commitment. And there are some, uh, there's, there's a full two-page requirements of the board person and so far we don't have anybody.
I can't commit to the dates. I looked into it again and I have other things too.
That's fine. That's my update.
I had offered, uh, to do it, but I have a eighty-seven year old mother in California who is struggling. And I'm the only one that can be there to care for her and I cannot take on another commitment. Has nothing to do with my exuberance early on.
And I already have one of the RHA meeting that I'm doing and I had go during my work hours. So I, I can't, I can't get a second approval on something else like that. I already got one.
The biggest challenge is that, you know, they want a board member, but they want a board member who's gonna, who's gonna be fully committed to every single, um, facet of the organization. They want a board member to do finance, uh, to, to go out and fundraise. They want a board member to attend all of the alliance meetings. They want a board member to volunteer the whole weekend of the economic alliance. It's.
Oh, I get it. The RHA is fundraising and all that jazz as well.
Right, so.
Retreats, you got it.
Do you think we can partner with Bayfield Chamber of Commerce?
Could be. In fact, they should be going to those things.
Okay, so when I went to the meeting and what happened? Something happened and I, I can't remember the name of the gentleman, but the gentleman that like put our packets together and everything. And he said, well, I probably won't go to the board meeting, but I will go to the chamber meeting. And it's like, but the chamber isn't giving you five thousand dollars. We are. So it's kind of like, it really is an organization that would best support the chamber and work best with the chamber. The board, we, the town, we have our hands tied in so many ways with, with getting actually involved in business development. And so I'm kind of, I'm with you. I kind of think it really needs to go that way. The other thing that kind of has me disturbed is that, you know, in one of their meetings, they talked about, they had many, um, mini certifications and they had twenty-five people go through these mini certifications. And again, I asked, you know, how many are from Bayfield and she thought, and oh, we had one person from Studs Lumber. Studs Lumber, they don't even know where we're at if they're thinking Studs Lumber is in Bayfield, you know? So I don't know, I've been involved in that organization. I've gone for, I mean, I've been going to the meetings for probably two years. And, you know, sat as a board member for six months and this is, just doesn't seem like it's a fit for us, first of all.
Well, I'm wondering though, because I'd never been to that meeting and I had gotten an email from the executive director about it and I was like.
Two meetings. One's a monthly meeting and then there's a board.
Board meeting, okay. So the meeting I sat in for, I only had forty-five minutes, but Katie gave a pretty impressive update as to what we're doing in Bayfield. So I think that if maybe we could work with the Bayfield, um, Chamber of Commerce, we would need to provide some sort of information for them to then share on behalf of Bayfield.
Well.
And I don't see a problem with that.
No, Katie, Katie and Ashley did alternate on doing the updates.
Yeah.
For the meeting, which is, that's a.
Maybe that's what we need to do is.
Tiny portion of, we can give that to the next manager to do.
Okay, but.
It's the rest of the portion, like, we're just sitting on the board. We're not a, we're not an active board member.
Oh.
I mean,
Or.
We are, but we're not.
Okay.
You know, we're giving that five thousand dollars. And so I can see why we would be sitting on the board because we have a fiduciary responsibility for that.
All members give five thousand.
I don't know if it should go to the extent of now we are operating as a full-on member of that.
Okay.
Of that organization without actually saying, yeah, I'm committed to that organization. I'm committed to Bayfield. You know what I'm saying? And that's a lot of extra. Do you have to do that all with the RHA? Do you have to go out and attend additional meetings?
I helped to put on a, a complete conference, like a half-day conference and, and I helped fundraise for it.
So those are all.
And, yeah, that's, that's all, yeah.
How many meetings a month do you have?
It's just the one, but sometimes they'll have like a retreat or if they're going budget sessions, then we do budget sessions and so it's, it's a decent commitment. And I, I'm aware of the economic alliance. I mean, in the past, they haven't been, they've been like a Durango thing. And having the Bayfield come on board, I think with the new leadership and Sarah, she really wants to have it more of, of a La Plata County community thing that helps all of, all of us, not just, um, Durango. And she actually, Sarah Tober was the one who kind of really put together the regional housing alliance meetings as well. And we actually succeeded in that where we were able to get funds for all the departments. All of us are listening to Bayfield and Ignacio and, you know, and it's not just all about Durango. Um, so I think where they're going with it is a good thing and we don't want to miss out on that. And it can help because they do, and they, you know, if we had issues in our area, they could be a really good resource for us to go to with economic development, um, with resources and understanding things. Um, you know, they've been through stuff. And I think on that level, I think it's really good for us to do, but maybe it's something that it's a shared thing where maybe if you can't go one, one of the meetings, somebody else goes to another meeting and that way it's maybe back and forth if one person can't commit to it. I know I can't. I have a full-time job and I'm on four other committees.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And it's fine. I know it's a big commitment and I'm fine. It's just that like now I'm like, I don't, I'm here to represent Bayfield and do what I can do for Bayfield. I am not necessarily committed to the economic alliances as much as they want each one of their board members to be committed. The other, so what about this? Is there any way? And this is just brainstorming. Is there any way that we could work with the chamber? And, you know, we do do, um, nonprofit grants for like the, you know, the street fairs and stuff like that. Could we create a nonprofit grant and give them the money? And have the connection between the.
I don't think you need the money piece added to it to get the connection. I see where you're going, like wanting to like connect them and.
Like, we keep, the board, the town.
Well, I can tell you the chamber doesn't have five grand.
Right, that's why I'm saying, right, exactly.
I already know that piece, but.
That's why I'm saying, can we, is there some way that we can do this to hand it off to the chamber?
Well, I, I think you can kind of, we could potentially partner with the chamber on it without a monetary thing. I think, I think they would be interested and they may want to participate in it, um, without that piece. Especially if we have updates from the town that they can go and present. Because they're invited whether they have five thousand dollars or not. They want the chambers and the chambers can go and present without contributing money.
The board, the board part, the presenting the updates, that's no big deal.
Right, so.
That's easy.
When does the board part meet? Is that just?
First Wednesday, but then they want somebody to do all the other, you have to go to the investors meeting. There's probably about three or four meetings a week, a month.
That's, that's ridiculous.
I can't commit to that.
I'm fine with sharing it.
You know what?
If we can work that out, but.
Let me talk to, I, I know Sarah pretty well. I mean, like I, I meet with her often, so let me talk to her and see if they have some sort of solution and just let her know, you know, we're pretty, we're pretty much a volunteer board anyways. Well, I'm gonna be there next Thursday, so I figure I could talk to her.
It's my position. I need to take care of it. So let me talk to her.
Yeah, just say what, ask her what kind of ideas she might have and just let her know, we're, we're pretty much a volunteer board. We're, we're not, you know, their, their boards get paid.
That is a state position.
Yeah, their board, their board members in the other areas are paid a lot more than we are. You know, the monies we get is enough for the gas to get us to those, those meetings, you know? Um, and just see what she has to say and bring it back and let's, let's find out, you know? We're interested and we want to be a part of it, but it's, it's hard to have that whole time commitment. And just see, see what she has to say and let her know we thought about how we could partner with the chamber and, you know, what would that look like and, you know, is that something we could do?
Okay, good. Thanks for the input.
Anything else?
No.
Trustee Katzos?
I have a region nine meeting, um, on the tenth that, um, I'll be attending. I met with Laura, the, um, executive director, had a really great conversation. the Executive Director, had a really great conversation with her. She also filled me in a little bit more about the Economic Alliance and that we've had a, historically, Bayfield has had a representative, and that all of these committees work together to bring resources to our communities. And so if we're not actively involved with these committees, then we're missing potentially opportunities to bring things back to the town of Bayfield to benefit the town of Bayfield. So that was very enlightening to speak with her, and I'm planning on attending the park, kind of closing down for their effort on the survey meeting on the twelfth.
I'm gonna go back a second, 'cause I just thought of something. Is anybody on the Planning Commission maybe interested? It's a thought.
In the Economic Alliance?
Mm-hmm.
I could ask next week.
Yeah, I mean, it couldn't hurt. You might be able to get Charlene to do it.
There you go. That's a possibility.
I know, she could probably get one day off a week to do something like that.
Economic stuff, so that's an idea.
She'd get brownie points with her boss for doing it. I know her boss.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope.
Trustee Moreland?
The Regional Housing Alliance doesn't meet until next week.
Trustee Nyberg?
Southwest TPR is December twelfth, one to four.
And Trustee Zizaro?
I was not able to stay for all of the Upper Pine Board meeting. I think it was two weeks ago, but I did speak to Chief yesterday, and I know that he and Katie had been in conversations about that letter, and then it was in the packet, so there was that. They do have a swearing-in ceremony on the twelfth that I was planning to attend, and then I'll be at their next regularly scheduled meeting in, I think it's gonna be in January. And then I'm really hopeful that we can start talking about an exercise like I just did in Mankas. I never got to share that with the group, but with the town of Mankas, we did a dam failure exercise, and the mayor and the trustees and the local police department, there was a whole bunch of town involvement in that exercise, and what they would do for resiliency and recovery if the Jackson Gulch Dam were to fail, because it would flood a lot of the town, it would impact infrastructure and those types of things. And so I am looking at how we can do something with Upper Pine, with maybe Viacedo, to see if the water were to come down, how
Where it would hit.
where it's gonna hit in the town, and then what is our plan for continuity of operations? How would it impact infrastructure? So this is kind of a big project I'm looking at, but I'm hopeful that we can have a couple meetings once things kind of get settled. Maybe we're waiting for Town Manager, but it was really exciting. There was an article in the Journal about it, if anyone wants to read about that exercise that we did. It was with the Southwest Incident Management Team, and then again, partnering with Montezuma County and the town, so it was really great, and I would love to see us do something. We're a municipality a little bit larger than Mankas. I think that there are things we could do that would be similar and kind of test our new emergency operations plan that we adopted last year, so a lot of exciting work that can happen there that I'm definitely willing to work with the town on.
Well, we just completed all of our NIMS training. Every one of my officers are certified 100, 200, 700, and 800, so we're all caught up. And we plan on sending Dustin to 300 next year.
Wonderful. I'll probably be teaching that somewhere in Durango-ish.
I appreciate that offer, Lori. I think that would be really beneficial.
I do, too.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Upcoming dates of interest, December tenth is the Planning Commission, seventeenth is a trustee's regular meeting, and the town offices will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and noon on the thirty-first, and all day January first. Do I need to close this meeting before I go into, do we go into executive session and then close the meeting, or close the meeting and then go into executive session?
We've always done it where we went into executive session and you closed the meeting afterwards, 'cause you have to come out of the meeting and say, "No decisions were made," so that's why they did it after.
We're getting ready to go into executive session, so I have to close this portion of the building off. There will be really no meeting after that.
There could be a decision made, but
Yeah, we can make a decision after we come out of it, so that potential could happen.
They can sit out there in the lobby and play for two hours.
I hope not. I don't wanna be here two hours. But knowing us.
We tried to keep it down.
We all just needed to talk.
Half hour, but...
Well, not what I remember from before, but I'm like, it just seems really cold.
Okay.
You know what, I probably should use...
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, we need to make a motion to go into executive session. There's a, there's a... Okay. Yeah.
We're doing the whole room clearing out, so we're taking a break.
Okay.
I guess so.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll see him before Christmas.
I don't know. I think Michael will be back, he's, yeah, he had surgery today, but he's already out, yeah, so.
He told me that he was like, really, I, yeah, he was really looking forward to it. He's like, it's not a big deal.
Good.
My spine surgery.
I'm like, no, he's back, his lower back.
So, but it was just like, you know, through the scope or whatever, so he's not even spending the night, so.
Like, are they allowed to be anywhere?
He's been in a lot of pain, so.
Please put me out for three days.
Yeah. Okay, good to see you.
You want me to send that directly to you?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm out of here. I'm recording just for the talk reasons.
Gotcha.
I'm sure Sarah was on there.
Yeah. You're joking.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, my goodness, come on. It's like right down here, a tree on the north side.
There's also some cinnamon heights over there.
He's living in a van.
Is he have a dog?
Come on, you haven't noticed him one time? Nobody said anything about it?
No.
It's still recording. Just letting you know. So what about these other people, like the people that are parked in the schools? You don't worry, like, you guys just don't bother with them.
But we do, we go out and check them when we're called.
But when you're called, but not any?
But it's private property.
Yeah.
We don't go up to school, we're not gonna worry, be on the property, we don't go over there without their permission to do something.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering how they're handled. You know, like, do you guys do a round and say, "How are you doing? Everything okay?"
Yeah, we check them, and then we give them guidance where they can go for where the services are related. So then mostly, a lot of the county in Durango has all the services.
Do they have a place for them to park the cars?
So, I need to stay.
I don't think they're needing services.
Are you part of? Yes, so that would be a yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I don't, I don't think, these people seem like they're permanent.
We've done it earlier.
No, they're permanent.
But at the beginning of the agenda, not the agenda.
No.
Oh, I'll tell you when I do that.
I don't know what you're talking about. Where's the van?
All of a sudden, there's a packet in front of me.
What is it looking like? No, I just, I don't know that I passed it.
So we need a motion to go into executive session?
Well, you need to read all that language.
Waiting for it to clear out. Okay.
It's fine.
You wanna go? I'll hold it.
You do need to read all that language that's in the packet.
Yeah. Great, so I'll move to go into executive session in accordance with CRS Section 24-72-2043AIX or nine, and CRS Section 24-6-4023.5, executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024F, a personnel matter, consideration of documentation, resumes, letters of reference, and other materials, and for conducting interim town manager interviews. Part A, in accordance with CRS Section 24-7-2043AIX and CRS Section 24-6-4023.5, and consideration of documentation, resumes, letters of reference, and other materials for conducting and discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4024F, and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. The topic involves consideration of documentation, resumes, letters of reference, and other materials for conducting interviewing interim town manager candidates. And for, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Those who will be included in the meeting will be Mayor Ah, Trustee Nyberg, Trustee Zizaro, Trustee Hartz, Trustee Katzos, and Trustee Moreland. Town HR Director Marie Kane? Kim? Who else is?
Um, probably.
Attorney?
Do you want me to stay?
Lindsey?
Lindsey Nelson?
Nelson, thank you. Dustin, are you staying?
I'll come back in case there's a motion.
Okay.
We usually hand the meeting, the recording to the attorney, and that's why I was saying, or you. Sorry.
And do I also have to include that the candidates for the positions will also be?
I would add that in, and we expect to have three candidates.
Okay, and we expect to have, do I need to say their names?
I would.
Okay, and as part of this, we will be with Dave Bost, candidates Dave Bostwick, J. Rybolid, and Jeffrey Durbin.
So now the other people leave?
No, we gotta take our roll.
Yeah, somebody needs a second, that's.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes.